Beginning of March, we created an onsite task force, returning to onsite task force. And it has been the people you see there, you can read. I convened it because I was hearing it from a bunch of different places and I'm co-chair of the property use group. So it seemed to kind of make sense that we kind of spearhead that. And but we've been very much active in talking to other people on particularly the religious education people. Judy's been talking to families and consultants on music and audio visual needs. And we're trying to plan for the entire site to have a consistent plan for the entire operation, including rentals. The long-term rental people are on their own, they can do, they rent their space and they may, but the short-term rentals that are using our space have to comply with our rules. So we have some guiding principles that we came up with. First of all, you principles will guide our decision-making, which means we honor the inherent worth and dignity of every person. As our first principle, we will also comply with all government COVID-19 guidelines. And we will not widely return in person for Sunday services until every adult has had an opportunity to be vaccinated. I know this week theoretically, everybody's eligible to be, every adult is eligible to be vaccinated. But effectively, you're not, it's not going to all happen this week. It's going to take a few weeks to get to the place where the county people are telling us we need more people. Right now, that's still very much more demand than there is supply. And I think one of the things we've learned as we, as we talk, not every solution is going to be right for every person. That each person's going to have to decide for themselves and we need to respect that. We'll look, we, we think our, our mission is to offer as many choices as possible and encourage participation and as effective in a participation by all that we can manage to come. And the other thing is that everything is subject to change. It depends on conditions. We sent out that survey and thought we had a good list of the questions we wanted to ask. And last Monday, the governor said, oh, we're just going to get rid of the tiers on June 15th. And we didn't ask any questions about that. So there, we're kind of, it kind of threw a monkey wrench in, in our planning and we, we don't have all the answers at this point. I, the spoiler alert, we're not going to tell you today when which church is reopening. So, because we don't know yet. It all is based on what's going on and there's lots more information and, and stuff that we need to know. So I have some discussion guidelines when I muted you, these are the same discussion lines we've used, guidelines we've used for the other town halls. So if you want to talk, raise your hand. I'm not, I'm not going to go through, you know, if you, do it if you want to. I have a couple of breaks in there for, that is specifically for questions. But this, it's the same thing. We've got people watching the chats and watching the screens so that, that if you raise your hand, you can use the raise hand feature, you can chat, put it in the chat. Meg Wilson's in there that she's able to, she, she's watching the chat. So people will, will get your, will get your question out there if, if you have questions. So the survey, we're only going to share a few of these slides. We will make the rest of them available. We'll put it, we'll put the connection in the blast. We'll put a link in the blast for you. So the first one is, are you partially or fully vaccinated at this time? And we were surprised, 70% are already fully vaccinated. And 23% are on their way and I, I assume some of them are already, are could answer that they are fully vaccinated by now. And a few are waiting and to, there are two people that say, no, I don't plan to get vaccinated. So we need to respect all those choices. And, but it, it was impressive to us how many are already done and how many are planning on getting it. This slide about the RE program, there's only a total of five responses here. But I know Judy's been working with the families too. But you can see that they, they're saying that social gatherings and support groups are okay as hybrid or pool parties. Religious education in a park are okay, but, but we've got parents that are not ready for indoor education, religious education classes. This is another one where Governor Newsom threw a monkey wrench in there. We're thinking right now probably are we in the park through the summer, but aren't quite sure it's all. There's more, it seems like it changes every week. How do you feel about hybrid programs in small groups with some people attending? Overall, everyone one is hoping for making it available both ways. And we're working on that. There is, this is 58 responses. There were a total of 90, oh dear, 91 responses, I think it is. Go back, 90, okay. I think it was 91 and somebody didn't answer that question. So. That's a great response from our size group. And volunteering, Sean mentioned this in the service. One of the things we're nervous about is going to hybrid requires more volunteers. And are we willing to support that? So this is the, these are the questions that, you know, would you be, that, and we'll, we'll get to more of this later. So what we have done is we took the tiers and each of the tiers, the purple, the red, the orange, the yellow. And, and we actually created our own green tier before Governor Newsom started talking about it, about what would happen after the tiers. And made detailed plans for worship, for small groups, for RE, for music, for the building use. And it, it's detailed and we went up through it for each tier. Obviously, we're into the orange tier at this point. And we're, we're, and we don't have a timeframe for switching. We'll give as much notice as we possibly can. And you know, the whole thing with June 15th has created some challenges. So this is the plan. And, and I don't know if Sean is able to put that into the chat for you or not. She, there is a link that we could show you. It's a big spreadsheet. You can see that and obviously you can't read it. And we're not going to go through it today. That's way too much detail. I'm going to save you and give you this one, which is the super summarized version at the orange tier currently, that small groups may transition to hybrid anytime they're ready. The, just schedule the room. We do have an agreement. We'll get to that, the, the taking responsibility. We do not have at this point a sextant. The David and, and Yessenia have left and we do not have a new person hired. We have been letting some of our short-term rentals come back on the condition that they take all responsibility for making sure that we comply with the guidelines and for cleaning. And that means, you know, making sure the room gets put back, making sure the trash gets taken out and making sure the bathrooms get cleaned if they're used. So it's, you know, it's, it's not quite there yet, but it is a start. And in fact, we had our first group using it on Friday, the artist's rise. And the traffic on the email of everybody being excited about it and the pictures going around is, is heartwarming to see. Cause they're, they did have a meeting. It was on short notice and they, three of them met and met in the courtyard and I'm sure they were safe and practiced all their guidelines and they signed the agreement. So that's, that's what it's going to take. And, and I know that Sean has been working with like the sermon discussion groups and some of them say, no, we'll just say we can on Zoom and that's fine too. Each group's going to have to kind of decide for themselves. We think that a yellow tier, that's when hybrid worship services may resume. And we have made the commitment to when we do come back on site that we will always be hybrid, that it real, we've had, we have enough out of town people and people for whom getting to the site, to, obviously you see is so difficult that we will always be on hybrid. This isn't, we, we see this as a long-term thing. And that we will keep going. This is kind of our, that last bullet is kind of our, to the, kind of our approximation of the green tier that we'll keep going until guidance discontinues. Any questions so far? Okay. I don't, I, I'm, I'm counting on my people that are watching for questions. Okay.
Nothing on chat.
I'm looking, I'm scanning through everybody to see if I see a raised hand. Oh, Mike, Mark, Mark has a question.
Okay.
Need to unmute Mark. You need to unmute Mark.
Is he allowed to?
I don't know.
He is now. Try, try again, Mark. I'm sorry.
Okay, um, are we gonna have a, are we gonna have a signup sheet for in-service meeting?
Um, that if we come back with physical distancing, we will have to have a signup sheet. That's one of the things we're working on. Yeah, we would have to have some way of regulating, living in orange, I don't want to come to the church unless I know there's going to be a seat for me when I get there. And I imagine there's others the same way. So we, we will have some way of regulating the traffic if we're, if we're limiting it, we have to be able to let.
And that's going to be online, the signup sheet?
That's a good question. I don't know. I would think it would have to be, or that Sarah would be helping with that for people that are having trouble with online.
There's a few hands up. Eva and Linda has a question.
Linda?
Think Eva Lewis first.
Oh, okay.
Yes, what if you run a group, you are the chair and you do not want to go physically back to the church, but you have members in your group who do, what takes precedent?
I would say as long as they're willing to take that responsibility and make sure that the guidelines are followed and things happens, that would be fine.
Well, in other words, they would, they would do hybrid and, and they would be responsible for being on site. The leader would not.
So they would be hybrid-ing as a little group to the rest of the people who are out and about in their houses. Weird, okay. I don't get it, but that's right.
Each one have to decide for themselves.
So Nancy, and I think Sean would probably want to weigh in on this too, for, for the sermon discussion groups. Let's say that I polled the group and half of them wanted to meet in person. Could we meet? And I, I would be willing to be a part of that. Could we meet at the church in the courtyard or in suite four if it were available? And then we would have Zoom abilities for the rest of the group?
Yes, we don't have a Zoom ability set up for a suite four, but we're close. I don't think it'll take us real long. But yeah, we're working, we, that's, that is a, we're not quite there yet and my IT team, I'll be talking to you. But I don't think either, both of them kind of have partial capabilities right now and they just have to get fully up and, up and running.
I want to say also that in terms of capabilities, what we mean is we don't yet have a computer dedicated to that yet. But if you were to bring your own laptop, you know, we have, we have Wi-Fi, so you can do it that way.
Oh, great. Well, I went to ask Sean, have you pulled the group leaders for sermon discussion group to see who's interested in starting?
Well, the, the feedback that I've gotten from three of the four leaders was that most of their people wanted to stay online. They liked that they didn't have to commute and, you know, that kind of thing. One group does have a member who hasn't been able to participate much. And so they may then be meeting in hybrid or in person. So it'll, each group will make it, will make a decision for themselves.
Sounds good.
Corey and April?
Yeah, just a quick comment. We may need to look at, or a suggestion, we may need to look at bandwidth. If we have a couple of groups all meeting at the same time, that might put, you know, it's something we're going to have to evaluate from what I'm hearing in the discussion.
Yeah, they are talking about that, but remember that we're talking about one computer for each group. It's not going to be, even though there might be multiple people on the computer.
Okay, so you would have a couple of links going at the same time.
Yeah.
Which will use bandwidth, I think.
Yeah.
Okay.
A couple should be fine. I mean, we, we upgraded our, our whole system in December of 19. And that cut down a lot of our bandwidth issues we were having. We can't all go in there and be on Zoom together. Our bandwidth, you know, we can't have a hundred people on Zoom. And we don't quite know what the limit is, but it's, I don't know if Steve's on it, whether he wants to weigh in on that. He thought three or four was starting to, starting to be scratchy. We'll have to work on that. I mean, that's one of those things we'll just have to find out.
Tracy has a question.
Yeah, just a comment and that is I've done hybrid things before. And for the people that were on Zoom, it was kind of difficult. And I think you guys may have already thought about this, but having a larger monitor rather than just a laptop size helps because otherwise, you know, we're at these tiny little squares versus.
Exactly, exactly. In, in suite four, there already is a larger monitor. It doesn't belong to us, but we're allowed to use it. So all we need is a computer to power it. And we do have a one larger monitor in Daniel's, in the Victoria room. And we are thinking of getting a second one because that is a long skinny room and, and it might be better to have two in there. And Daniel's Hall will be using the projector. So that's as big as we can get.
You tell that there's a lot of technology that we're, that's, that's, that's good. It's a little bit holding us up a little bit, but, but we will get there. And you have wonderful people who are on it and who are considering all of these things around technology. So I believe Tatiana has her hand up.
And then Sarah Jones.
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
Hi. So I have a question about RE. How soon will we know that there are actual meetings in a park that were mentioned that we can go and meet in person?
Yeah, so we're on the same schedule as the worship service. So as soon as some people are able to go back in worship, then we'll also start meeting with RE. And it seems like that we will meet in a park and I will be figuring out which park and getting that information out to all the families about how to get there and stuff.
Yes, yes, thank you. So as of now, what do we know? We know that we are waiting for the tier to become, I mean, well, I'm sorry, I, I, I may have missed it. What are we waiting for? When will we know about meeting in person?
We have to wait at, at least until the yellow tier. And also until we have all the technology in place.
Yeah.
Okay.
The technology, the tier and the.
And all the volunteers.
Everybody that wants a vaccination has had a chance to get it.
Right, right, right. Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Sarah Jones? Somebody said Sarah wanted to talk.
It looks like she changed her mind, although if you're talking to Sarah, you're on mute, so.
I think that my question is probably not of interest to everybody, but I'm wondering, once you get the computers and things in place, we're talking about scheduling meetings that used to be at the church all the time, correct? So it's for me, it'll still just be scheduling meetings. I don't have to, I mean, there's not going to be much more than that, right?
Yeah, we, we'll talk offline on that. Thing as part of that, yeah. You know, that we want to be sure, whoever's the responsible person on site understands about the rules. To make sure everybody's safe.
Okay.
We ready to go on? Okay. Okay, so we have onsite guidelines. These should look very familiar to you. They've probably been on everything you've walked into in the last few months. You know, these will probably stay, the, the, these to me should stay forever because I think one of the things we've learned is you, if you're not feeling well, if you think you're coming down with something, stay home. Do not come. And when we, we used to have a culture of, oh, I think I'm coming down with a cold. I don't feel good. And, and everybody go, I give you sympathy and say, oh gee, too bad. And I think we're going to, I think that's going to be a change in our culture for good, I hope. And if you have, think you might have been, might be a carrier that if you're, if you've not been vaccinated and you've, think you might have been exposed or if you've had a positive test, how long you have to stay home? Vaccinations are encouraged, but they are not required. And we're not going to be asking people, are you vaccinated or not? It's, it's kind of the, the worth of every person. Judy has a question.
The only exception to that, whether the asking about the vaccination is that RE teachers will be required to be vaccinated.
Yeah.
So all, all teachers who are working with kids will, will need to be vaccinated.
That's just like the background checks, yeah.
Hi Nancy, on the chat, Ken has a question.
Okay.
I don't know what it is. Ken, do you want to unmute?
Oh, that was earlier, I wanted to make a comment as far as the small groups meeting, if they're just bringing in their own computer.
Hey Ken, we can't hear you. Can you, can you move closer to your microphone, Ken? We can't hear you.
Sorry. Yeah, precisely what I was talking about is small groups meeting in the other rooms with one computer that's going to need audio help with the microphones.
We need, we need better microphones, better cameras. That's part of it. The, the board has been meeting on Zoom for a number of years actually. And that's what they found. They found the sound is not good on a, on a laptop. That a laptop is made, the microphone is.
For an individual, not for a group.
Not 10 people in a room. So yeah, we, we're going to be upgrading the microphones. That's part of the technology.
Okay, I mean, I'm sure the sanctuary has got great AV.
Yep, oh yeah.
But the other rooms, okay.
And then onsite guidelines for small groups, masks are still required. Social distancing is required as long as we're in this yellow tier, as long as we're still distancing. Using hands that we will be acquiring hand sanitizer and masks for people that don't have them. Obviously, we encourage people to bring their own masks, but we'll be having them available too if somebody forgot.
Barbara, did you have a question?
Oh.
Hold on.
Yes. I just, I, I keep hearing a lot of different information about when people are vaccinated and we can get together. And my understanding is that even if you're vaccinated, you can still contract COVID. It won't be as severe. And so people still need to be careful.
Right, we're, we're still learning.
Yeah.
And that's part of our hesitancy that we're, we're taking baby steps right now. Because there's, there's still a lot we need to learn, a lot the scientists need to tell us.
Yeah.
And, and so that's why we're starting slow with, with the small groups. So we'll get better at it as we go.
I've, I've just read things where people have said, well, you know, you're immune after two weeks or something like that. And it's like, no, nobody's immune, you know, so.
That's why masks are still required.
Yeah, okay.
And social distancing. So I mean, what is, what's all this going to cost? This is our estimate right now. We've already got the Zoom account upgrades that we're paying for, for more Zoom accounts that, that we've all been using for the last year. That's, that's the $900 is the increment. We'll be supplying masks and hand sanitizers. That's a total guess on my part. I don't know. It seems generous to me. The choir is buying special masks so that we are starting, the choir is starting in-person rehearsals or hybrid rehearsals on Thursday. So we will be in the courtyard and trying it out. That one will be with the computers we bring. We'll probably need a Plexiglas screen in front of Sean to make sure that she can, in, in front of the pulpit. And then the three rooms all need various amounts of, of technology to get there. We're going to get a really good camera in Daniel's Hall to, so that it can zoom around and see and zoom in and out. We'll probably, we would, the, the thought right now, and this is not final because we're, we're still talking about it, is maybe a big iPad in the corner. So that when you come in, you can wave to all the Zoomers and, and they can see the congregation. And then you can wave to them at the end and, and you know, maybe even walk by it and say hi to people. We're trying to encourage as much and, and, and obviously on the big screen on the projector, it will be just like it is at home that you see mostly the speaker during most of the service, but at the beginning and the end, it's gallery view. So it'll be, you know. So, so we're getting all that technology. This is our current estimate. It's, it's definitely an estimate. And volunteer time, this is the other cost is I've got here, I, I've worked this up. This is what we, the volunteers that took, takes to run a service. On what would it took us before, what it's taking us right now and what we think it will take to do a hybrid one. A number of these are either done, like the slideshow creation is done several days before the service even happens. And some of these are like the iPad tender that's just watching and the camera operator that's watching that a piece of equipment during the service. So you can still fully participate in the service. You just have to be aware of taking care of the tech, of the, that, your piece of equipment. And it may be less, we want to start out with this until we see, I mean, maybe the iPad person and the camera person can be the same person. But until we know better, we think this is what it's going to take. So it's, you know, going up from five to 11 is, is a lot more volunteers.
Can I, can I just jump in here real quick? Just want to let you know that, you know, if, if it looks intimidating to you, don't let it. We will definitely give lots and lots of training to people to help them. I mean, we've had people who, I mean, you know, you know how much I adore Judy. She had to learn how to go on Zoom and do YouTube and she's one of the least techie people I know. Love you Judy. But, and she's become techie. So like you can learn and, and we're here to support you and love you through all of that. So please reach out if you're interested in doing any of these positions to Beth or myself and we'll get you hooked up. The other thing, on the previous slide, you know, that money we're looking at, you know, close to $9,000. We, we didn't really necessarily have that budgeted, so we want to encourage you. How it got your pledge in, I'm making another plug for pledges. Get those pledges in. Bless your hearts. So thank you. That's all I want to say.
I have a question from Alex and then Dave. You have to unmute Alex. We're not getting there. Jeff, can you unmute Alex?
I have no question.
I can only ask them to unmute.
Hold on a second, Alan.
Maybe we should go to Dave. Alex, maybe you can put it in the chat.
No, I, I didn't have it.
I'm unmuted now. So a question about the technology cost for the new sanctuary. I'm wondering if maybe the really good camera we put in Daniel's Hall could be, or moved over to the new sanctuary and save some costs that way?
We have talked about that and at this point, we think we'll need an even bigger camera for the sanctuary and that we will always need this technology in Daniel's Hall. That we will still be using it as a meeting room that, you know, if wedding receptions are happening in there, they, they may want to use it. So at this point, we think that it's probably not going to be a, something that we're going to be able to transfer. We think we'd have to overbuy for now and then we wouldn't have anything when we transferred it to the sanctuary and that doesn't make sense.
Thank you.
I, I, I see Maureen in there second now, but I thought Dave was, okay.
Dave and Alan also has a question.
Okay, Dave and then Alan and then Maureen. That's the order I saw, man.
Yeah, this is Dave Carlson. The Episcopal Church
The Episcopal Church. St. James the Great. Is helping people with the distancing by issuing the six foot. Swimming noodles to families when they when they come in. And and really that helps ensure that people stay a reasonable distance apart. And it's also a little fun.
Yeah. Thanks. Alan was next and then Maureen. I can't hear you, Alan.
I have no question.
Oh, okay. Maureen.
So there should be another line in either volunteers or costs, which is we have to have somebody to clean up.
Right, and we will be, before we can come back, we have to have a sexton hired. That that is that they will be back on on staff before we can come back and and Audrey's working on that actively. So when when we're coming back to worship, that we will have, so we so we won't have to have somebody. Cleaning up after the after, you know, we will, but we'll be paying them. Okay, so you've seen this, you've seen this. And this is by zoomers and rumors thing. There's advantages and disadvantages. You know, a real downer for me is if I'm in the room, I can't sing a hymn. Yet until we're until we're cleared to do that, which I don't know when that's gonna be. But there's advantages and disadvantages and, you know, we're gonna do the best we can to make sure that zoomers and rumors can see each other, but you're still. The zoomers are gonna see each other better and the rumors are gonna see each other better. That's we're not gonna be able to get around that completely. Gabrielle.
Yeah, if 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 we go through a period when we have limited capacity. I guess you may have answered that, he said may need to make a reservation. Is is it possible that there'll be areas other than the sanctuary, other than than, I guess, Daniel's Hall that. That could be used for the overflow crowd?
Yes, yes, that is part of the plan that we would have. There's no reason that that both Daniel's Hall and Victoria Room couldn't be in on Zoom. Just like anybody else and and you doing it as a as a big group, you know, or not a big group, but a a limited group. A socially distanced group. Then Ken and then Mark.
Yeah, I so assuming. As far as the groups that used to rent Daniel's Hall and provide a good source of income and for their meetings and such. Pretty much putting that on the same schedule as our services in that we'd need a sexton first. Such, but you will reach out and notify. There is an availability date, yeah.
Hi, this is Meg. Yes, we have already six twelve step programs signing our COVID addendum and. Are currently starting their meetings as small groups and they're responsible for cleaning up like Nancy mentioned, sanitizing. Emptying the trash. Our bridge group is experimenting to see how they can do bridge. Coin Club is has approached. So yes, it's it's we're looking at all those rentals that we had before. And the Apostolic Church meets on a Sunday afternoon.
So you may let some of them. Start get back in Daniels before our services start there.
Yes, Apostolic Church is in Daniel's Hall already.
Okay.
They're doing their own cleaning.
Yeah. Can open up again, yeah.
There are also six feet apart and a much smaller congregation, so.
And they're doing hybrid, so they've got half on the hybrid and they're absolutely required. They actually come in an hour. Before to clean the bathrooms because we don't have a sexton and they agree to do that.
Yeah, the coin club distancing would be tough because of the membership size, but okay.
Oh, it's not very big. It's they and they're gonna do Zoom as well.
Yeah. Okay.
Mark?
How are you gonna make sure that people don't sing along with the song? And also, are you guys working with your internet provider such as AT&amp;T?
We are with AT&amp;T. I don't know if we can get any, we've Steve and I are working on that to see if we can get more bandwidth. We we have the maximum AT&amp;T bandwidth now. So we're we're working on whether there's any more possibilities or not on that. And what was your other part of the question?
And how are you gonna make sure that people don't sing along with the songs?
Well, I mean, if we're masked, it's gonna be really hard to tell. I I think we have to be on the honor system. The the fact of the matter is when you sing, if you're singing well, and Beth Beth will tell you this, you can project a whole lot farther than you do in normal conversation. And I mean, I Beth, I mean, choir directors for years have been saying, sing to the back of the room. And, you know, that's just spread it out there. And so we can't, we can't do that. We just can't. So and we're have to, but we're gonna have to be on an honor. So just like the, you know, you're gonna have to do the survey. Am I feeling well enough to come? We're not gonna, there's very little evidence that temperature taking is really a good screening method. It it's really the the best method is how do you feel and being honest about it with yourself before you come. The same thing with the same thing with the singing.
One other quick thing about the singing, it's not just the expending of the air, much more air when you sing, it's the inhalation. Way more exchange of air than you would normally do just sitting there. And in our unventilated, low ceilinged room. We just don't want to put that much. Air circulating for the hour that we're sitting there together. So that. And it may be that I'm not gonna be there singing in that room either. So the people that go. People that choose to be rumors will just know that singing won't happen for a while, so. And we'll figure it out as we go along.
Thank you.
That that is what I have. So are there more questions or?
For those who didn't see, Maureen asked a question in chat, which was, am I right in assuming hugs will be postponed much longer than. In-person services and chances are that, yeah, that will. And that's also gonna just be, let's respect each other's bodies and our own comfort level as well. And if. You feel like you're up to hugging someone, always ask. There are some people who've never been comfortable with hugging in this congregation, so it's a good culture to start first is to just ask. I'm a I'm a hugger and I need to be better about that myself, so I will be modeling that.
Peggy Privor raised her hand and then Linda Sperry has raised a hand too. So Peggy, you need to unmute.
I just had a quick question about the singer's mask that was in the budget. What are these singers' masks? Are they, how are they different from what most people get?
Oh, um, they're they're thirty-five dollars apiece. So but they're very specialized. I don't know if you can tell, it's got a like a framework which holds the mask. Away from your mouth. I don't know if you've ever expended a lot of energy and started breathing heavily in your mask. You inhale the mask. And it's it's just terrible. So this, it holds the mask away from your mouth about two inches. And it's also really, it covers the bottom, you know, underneath your chin really well, and it's got a little. Like a sticky plastic lining with a wire that holds your air super tight. So I feel really comfortable singing in these and I've tried it. It doesn't feel. It doesn't feel difficult to sing in at all.
It makes you look like a duck.
Yeah. They should make them in yellow.
You can quack along, huh?
Yeah.
Is there a special name for them? I I'm interested in getting something.
Oh. They're called resonance. There's lots of different ones. I I found these had really good reviews. I'll put I'll put it in the chat in case anyone wants. To look into it. I will always have them available for choir members. Well, the church will buy every choir member one. Some choir members are going to volunteer to donate some money to compensate, but it's not required. And. And then that'll be theirs to take care of, you know.
Linda has a question.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment on that last slide, Nancy, where you had a mental health question mark, I think. Yeah, mental health advantages. I think that that's something that's hard to be quantitative about. But, you know, my many of us are blessed to have someone that is has been living with us for the last year. But we have many, many in our congregation who live alone and they have. Really struggled. There are some that have struggled with with that. And I think that it's something that we have to weigh against. You know, is everything ever gonna be perfect? No, it's not. So we've got to take that into account also. And it's just something I think that's we have to be advised of and and keep in mind. So and also I thought it's interesting, the zoomers and the rumors and I guess the boomers could go in there too, so.
Sarah Jones asked, can you hear the singer in the chat? Can you hear the singer using the mask?
It it probably does soften the sound a bit, but we. We probably, we won't be singing together indoors for a long time anyway, so it won't be a performance kind of thing, but it will be for us to rehearse. And I'm hopefully gonna have some sing-along things for all of us, just casual singing things outside. Because I know we all miss singing together, so.
So and I I just want to mention also, if it seems like a lot of things are up in the air, it it's because it's it is all up in the air. We're we're kind of like, this is what ministers call liminal time. Like, we we just don't have all the answers yet. And it can be really aggravating. I don't know about you, but like I'm, like, I just want to know. I just want to know now, please, can we know? But we just don't. And and as you know, we've we've been following this last year, new information comes out all the time. And so we're. We're just as as Nancy said, we're taking baby steps and just being like, okay. Here's here's how we're doing things. We don't know the impact of all sorts of other things. We're moving ahead. We're planning ahead so that we can do that and and fingers crossed it all does. We will keep you informed as much as we possibly can. We'll probably have another town hall meeting at some point, all that sort of thing, so. Yeah, so at any rate. And Sarah Jones just asked, can we make a donation that would go specifically to the cost mentioned of making the changes? There's just a general thing of we ask that people trust those in finance to know what to do with money, so please do make donations, but yeah.
It's always good to pay up your pledge.
Yes, please.
We could create in the online. An item that says to the reopening and it could be one of your choices and you can donate that way too. Or send a check to the P O box number. Thank you.
Okay.
Can somebody call on me?
Hey, Linda, sorry.
Hi, Nancy, or someone, could someone do us a summary for of this of this town hall meeting for the reach? For next month?
Oh, I I forgot to mention that I, have we been recording, Jeff? I don't see the record.
Yes.
We are recording right now.
And yes, we will put it out in a a summary and. Make sure everybody can see it.
If you didn't know, Linda is our reach editor. So if you have wonderful things, yay, Linda.
Yes.
Yes, please. I need content.
Okay, I will make sure you get it, Linda.
Aren't we having links to this? Some of these charts and everything are good are gonna be on the website, right, Nancy?
Right, the 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 two links will be available in the blast. One, one to the survey results. And one to the the that document that I showed you that you can't read. It's the spreadsheet of what we're gonna do about every little thing.
All right, thank you, Nancy.
Okay.
Thank you so much, Nancy. This is terrific.
Thanks, Nancy.
Well, thank you all. Thank you all for your patience and understanding and cooperation. I want it to happen right away too, and it just, you know, it is what it is.
All right.
Okay.
Take care, everyone.
Okay.
Bye.